Welcome to the Planning Board for the City of Livingston for March 2, 2020. We're going to open up, well, we're going to continue our public hearing for definitive subdivision approval for Mary Avenue Extension. And we have an email from the applicant who, in writing, is requesting on behalf of-
Can you hear anybody?
Do you have your volume up?
The volume's on as high as it can go.
Hello?
I do hang up the phone. Yeah.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah, very faintly.
Yeah, the volume's on as high as it can go.
Okay, can you, um-
Can you turn your volume up?
So, back on Mary Avenue Extension, we have an email from the applicant. "On behalf of our client, James Zetaris, we request a continuance of a public hearing for the Mary Avenue Extension subdivision. Our consultants have submitted follow-up wetland information to the Concom, which they are currently reviewing with their consultant. We request the public hearing to be continued to the first scheduled April Planning Board meeting of April 6, 2020, and they're also extending action on the matter to June 15, 2020." Motion made second to continue the Mary Avenue Extension for definitive subdivision to 4.
Let's, uh, let's, what time's available?
6:20.
6:30.
6:30.
John, mute your phone. John?
Okay, motion made second. Are those, any discussion?
No.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Motion carries.
I can try him on the other phone.
Elizabeth, try calling me again.
Can I have someone open up the regular public meeting, please?
Maybe this is me.
Make the motion move to the regular meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Motion made-
I'm gonna try it on this phone.
Motion made second to-
Excuse me.
Motion made second to move to the regular meeting. Any discussion? Are those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed?
Yeah.
Motion carries. 2.0, minutes of previous meeting. 2.1, December 16, 2019.
We're not fair, are we?
He said he was gonna trip them. Thinking most second.
Thank you, friend. Motion made second by Paul. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Motion carries. 2.2, minutes from January 2, 2020.
Same thing, make motion second.
Motion made by Fred, second by Paul. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Motion carries. 2.3, January 27, 2020 minutes. Motion by Fred, second by Paul. Any discussion?
No.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Motion carries. 3.0, plans submitted. 3.1, A&R approval for 985 Pleasant Street. Map 381, parcel 11. People share, well, good. Good. Okay.
Scott Hayes, 4th Sub-Engineering, prepared this A&R plan. This is 985 Pleasant Streets, Resident A zoning district. Existing dwelling there, and it's proposed to be divided into a 40,000 square foot lot to serve the existing house and two one-acre lots wrapping around, preserving the existing house, and getting two additional building lots. The district requires 80 feet of frontage and 21,300, or 21,780 square feet, and direct over an acre of 40,000 square feet per lot. And the area isn't served by municipal water or sewer, so it's a title block loading issue with wells and septic systems to take this better than 45,000 square feet. So, works out if you want to build a lot in the regard.
I have a question here on this. Lot 1?
Yes.
I mean, you have an acre there, but you only have 25 feet of frontage from what I see here.
25 plus the 50.
Oh, 25, and the other corner for 54.
Yeah, yeah, there's, that 25 is to the easement. There's an access easement. So, it's proposed that lots 1 and 3 will be, will share a, or, well, lot 3 will be accessed over lot 2 to, it just, in that area, the lot topography is, you're at the top of the hill, it's a better place to access the lot in this corner over here where lot 3 gets its frontage. It's very steep, and there's a lot of grade to overcome really quickly, and there's septic system for the existing houses here, so this is kind of at the crest of the hill. It's much better sightline, it's much better grade, it's just a better place to get into the lot, so it's why we proposed it that way.
So, the, I mean, they just look like pork chop lots. Where you grab some frontage, are you supposed to carry the width to the house, the 80 feet frontage to the house? 100 feet frontage to the house? 100 feet for where the house is going to be built?
Right, the width is, uh-
I mean, it is up here, but you're supposed to carry that. This is, you know-
Down the street.
Yeah, down to the street. And then you got a septic system on lot 2. That's gonna mean that steam lot for the house, right?
Yes.
So, you got a septic system that, and they look like pork chop lots to me. They're just trying to maneuver the frontage to get the lot, but I think you're supposed to carry the frontage all the way up to the house. Is that true?
Well, I'm trying to recall, was that just for an actual subdivision? Does that apply to A&R lots still?
It applies to all lots, I think. I'm not sure, but we're gonna look that up, because even on Wartusus Street, we didn't allow this, because they were trying to do this on Wartusus Street. Yeah, but that's, you got the topography, and probably really, they were trying to empty, plus you got a lot, you're saying, this is, 985, that's past Wartusus Street, right?
It's just past May Street, by the, uh-
Right before you get the shoulder.
Yeah, it's very close to the Sterling.
I don't think that the mentions are there, but we're gonna find out. I think you have to carry the width from the frontage, at least all the way to the house, my recollection anyways. Because we, you know, we've tried, we've got rid of pork chop lots 15 years ago, maybe more. And these certainly were pork choppy to me.
It's, I think this is it. The lot is shaped. Says, "For the purpose of this section, all principal buildings may be built on any lot located in a district in which building is permitted, provided that the lot is shaped such that it is capable of containing a circle with a diameter equal to at least the minimum frontage of that district, and within which any principal building placed is the minimum yard requirements from any lot lines."
So, this is, this should be squared, this should be 80 feet carried to the house? That's how that's read, right?
No, I don't, I don't think that's what that just said. That the area suitable for buildings, that would have to be an 80-foot diameter circle and not crossing the setback lines in that area. Is that what I just heard?
"The lot is shaped such that it is capable of containing a circle with a diameter equal to at least the minimum frontage for that district, and within which any principal building placed is the minimum yard requirements from any lot lines."
Well, there's nothing about carrying a circle from the frontage, just the area suitable for buildings would have to have an 80-foot diameter circle, which certainly does.
Is there, excuse me, is there provision for pork chop lots in there? Should be.
Well, the next section is, "No lot on which a building is located in any district may be reduced or changed in size or shape, so that the building or lot fails to comply with the lot area, frontage, setback, yard, or height provisions of this section applicable to the construction of the building on the lot, provided that this section does not apply when a portion of lot is taken or conveyed for a public purpose." What's this, what is it zoned?
It's, uh, Resident A, right?
Yeah.
So, they need a half acre, they need 80-foot frontage.
In the, in the rural residents in the Residence A districts, no width requirements, no width dimensions of a yard front, as defined in the ordinance, may be less than the required front, lot frontage distance for the applicable district.
So, that means that you have to carry the 80 feet back. See, my understanding would be you'd have to carry the 80 feet all the way to where it's wide, so you'd be going through lot 2 to do that. Same thing with, with lot 3, you'd have to carry right over their septic system and square. That's what that just said.
"No width dimensions of a yard front may be less than the required lot frontage distance for the applicable district. A yard front is defined as a yard extending across the full width of the lot and line between the front of the lot and the nearest line of the principal building."
Well, say you're gonna carry the 80 feet at least back to where they're gonna be built, right?
That's, that's always been my understanding.
Me too. So, this wouldn't work, and it wouldn't be an A&R. To me, they're not A&R, because, because you don't carry the frontage back at all. Carry it back, what, 25 feet, maybe? 30 feet? Carried it 20 from here, not even, and on this side here? Oh, yeah, some verbiage in this.
I know what you mean, but I think we, when we change the ordinance, I think we-
You change to just the dimensions, carrying from the frontage, right?
Yeah.
To be equal to.
If you look at the dimensional requirements on Table 22-40-3, it talks about what's required in an RA zone.
It's a, okay.
And it says, "The lot shall be sized to minimum of 21,780 square feet," which they are. The minimum lot frontage is 80 feet, which has been met. The minimum lot width is 100, but it doesn't say, I guess Carol was reading, where you measured the lot width.
At the house.
Because if you build the house at the rear of the lot, you could have 100 feet.
Right, he's okay up here. He's okay up here, you know, building up there, but nowhere else. It's gotta be at least 100, but you gotta carry the frontage back. You gotta carry the entire 80 feet back.
It doesn't, I haven't heard that it said that anywhere in the regulations, just like-
I think it just said that in the one you read prior to going to the table. Said you have to maintain the front yard at equal to the width of the required frontage. That's what I heard.
It doesn't say that you have to carry that, the lot, the frontage width from the street line to the areas suitable for building.
It says the front yard, so wherever you're gonna build that house, but here, so the, the frontage of the front yard has to be carried, and then when you place the house, you have to have 100 feet.
100 feet.
Say again, John? 100 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, the house. But the frontage has, does the frontage has to be carried the whole lot, lot width?
The frontage has to be carried all the way back. The old houses that we had, they had a frontage of 80 feet, they would nick down to 50, and because the house next to them had maybe 120-foot frontage, so they would steal some frontage from that house. So, we ended up with all kinds of hard chop, chop lots.
Yeah, but these are creating, John-
And they tend to be frontage all the way.
These are creating new lots from one existing lot right now. So, my understanding is the 80-foot has to be carried the whole way up the lot. Because what you're doing is you're creating two non-conforming lots, from what I'm seeing here. Lot 1 and lot 3 are non-conforming, they have the area, they probably have plenty of feet to put the homes. We placed the homes, you're gonna have 100 feet, but you're not carrying the 80 feet of the front yard through the lot. I know it winds, but you gotta carry that line all the way up. Carol's still working. I know, you got a 10-foot strip there, you're coming down to 80 feet, that's kinda, I mean, that's what we're trying to avoid by putting some of these rules in place.
That's just what I said, you're stealing frontage.
Yeah, you're stealing frontage from lot 2, but he's saying in conditions where these were pre-existing old homes, and we've had some of those, and we've had, and those came as special permits to us. And that's what, because homes were already built there, the zoning might have changed. I wanna see, it's been at least 15 years, maybe longer, that we outlawed these kind of lots.
It's been 25.
25, maybe, yeah. I didn't wanna age myself.
Cool, any consideration to be given to the existing house and getting rid of that requirement, just to preserve?
No, because what you're doing is you're creating non-existing lots. Now, if the existing house, let's say you create one lot, you drive down the 80 feet to here, right? Just like this, then you still have to relocate this septic, but that would give them their front yard, and if they're not encroaching on the setback, it would be fine, but you'll never get this lot in either.
Or you could do that one, take it right up to the house, but that's it?
Yeah, but you're still gonna, yeah, you could bring it back to the house, but you're still gonna have your setback, what is it, 15 feet in Residence A?
15, yeah.
15 to the line. So, you need 15 to the line on each side of the home. Or living space. So, you'd have to carry back, carry back.
You could do two.
Right. But you're gonna have to, but then you're gonna be taking away square footage from lot 2, and you're still gonna have half an acre there, 21,000 square feet, 22,000 square feet, roughly, right?
21,780.
Yeah, yeah.
The only other thing you could possibly do is go before the zoning board of appeals and ask for a variance.
What do you mean? You could have a basis to ask for the variance for lot 2. And I don't know what you'd have for a basis for that. Because they're just trying to create extra lots and sell them, right? And build homes over.
Yeah, I mean, you know, but it gets, the question is, you know, if you got three lots there, and if there's no consideration for the existing house, you know, there's easily three, three lots there, so if we're trying to sort of do-
Work the lot lines around the existing house to preserve, so maybe that would be adequate justification with the board of appeals.
Or maybe, you know, we could take another look at, at, at-
You know, I would-
Carry that 80 feet back and see what we could do with it. I mean, we gotta relocate a septic, we gotta, you know-
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you gotta talk to them, because you gotta carry the 80 feet back to the other lots. Now, if you can get that configuration to work, and they're amenable to it, then there's no issues, as long as you keep your 80-foot frontage, which you can, from what it looks like, you're gonna have more than 80 feet frontage, you got 144 plus 64, right? 65. You got over 200 feet of frontage there.
Not quite.
Not quite, but close, right? I'm just going round numbers here. You're still at 200, but it's the 7.
Yeah, we've got, I think there's, yeah, 200.
Well, 64, so 65 and 60, yeah.
120 and 80 plus another 7, yeah.
Yep. That's how you can make it work, if you want, but you gotta make sure that you still got 15 feet to the lot line, and you're still getting your 80 feet. So, you really need 95 feet from this far corner here, past the house.
To the building, right.
Yeah, and on the other side, you know, you don't have a home there, so you're not gonna have a problem with the side setbacks, but you got a septic system.
Right.
So, did they put sewer up that part of the street?
No, it's not that far.
Just to Wartusus, I think.
Yeah, there's a new subdivision, Holland, that I think that, uh, just too far.
So, that's gotta be how you configure this to make it work. Because they're not, I don't think the, you know, the board of appeals is gonna look at it and say, well, wait a minute, you know, what's the hardship?
Location of the existing-
Yeah, that's not, I don't know.
Farm laws. Yeah.
Well, you could still do it by downsizing the yard on this side and relocating the septic. And this is an easement here anyway, except for the Powell Company, right? Utility easement. So, I mean, as long as you stay within that easement, you should have your 15 feet on that side of the houses. I don't know about that.
I think you could do two lots, I don't think you could do-
Yeah, I don't think you could do three. Yeah, I don't think you could do lot 1.
Without, assuming you keep the house where it is.
Right. The house where it is. You have to do it all around that house. Because you only have, I mean, even with the utility easement, you're right up, but how you drew the, how you came to the 80 feet, you know, you're quarter of the way, 20% of the way into that.
Already, yeah. Yeah, the, the, the bollacks on that side are 25 and 25, so, yeah. Those are where you'd carry that width from the frontage all the way.
So, what do we need to do?
Well, he's, you can just-
Well, you can, we can take no action on it and see if they can, we can figure it-
See if they wanna do it in a way that it works.
Well, we, we'd ask for a determination that approval is not required.
But, but that's not the case here, because-
Right.
It is required, because you don't have the frontage carried back. If, if it was pure 80 feet, straight line, you get your frontage, you get your lot area, and you get your house for 100 feet. But because you don't carry it all the way back, it's not an A&R lot.
Could I just have a moment to talk to the officials?
Absolutely, of course you can. We'll, we'll-
Go ahead, we'll continue, we'll continue with our, with our meetings and then just come back in.
Okay, I just wanna, I think we would like to withdraw, but I have what I can-
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's fine. Yeah, yeah. Because we won't do anything to it right yet. We're just, we're trying to help you out, and if we have to, you know, just close it without prejudice at times.
Can we consider getting a quick opinion from KP on this?
Yeah.
You probably should accept it as a non-buildable lot.
Well, that's not gonna-
That's not gonna do it, John.
They wanna build on it. I always hate doing this to people who own land.
Then you get a waiver from us.
But this is illusory, this is illusory, though. I mean, I think regardless of our ordinance, it's illusory.
That's the definition. You couldn't get it, anyway.
I don't know, but if we can get a quick opinion from them, if you thought-
We have to take that on here, about, what's that? We have to get permission to-
Well, I know, I know you do. And if, and you could, it doesn't hurt to ask, if, if the mayor says no, it's no.
Yeah.
Okay. Can we go back to 645 meeting?
Yes, well, we can't yet, because we have to do 3 points. Let's open, well, let's open up-
645.
The 645 meeting. Open public meeting for site plan approval for Research Drive Lot 16. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
We'd like to withdraw and revisit the lines there.
Okay.
In light of that.
So, we'll just, we'll withdraw without prejudice, so that there's no-
I think that's best.
It is, and let's take a quick look at it and, you know, see if we can reconfigure something, and see what the septic is gonna pass here, and how that's gonna weigh up to the total plan, stuff like that.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it, yeah, it definitely adds an element to legal, yeah.
It's confusing, the way they, they had it spelled out specifically in the old ordinances, and then they changed them all.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm suggesting if, if it's approved by the mayor, if we can get a quick legal opinion, that might be of some benefit, too. If you, if you talk to your client, in the meantime, we can get a legal opinion from our city solicitor, only if it's allowed by the administration. We can't just contact the city solicitor, so I can't make any promises. Maybe they can help out, or-
More of that leave us with the business tonight.
We're just gonna tape.
We'll just tape, we'll tape, we'll tape, we'll just, yeah, we'll-
Withdraw it.
Withdraw it, you can always, you can always reschedule it. You schedule it before the, the deadline, the date and time.
We have another meeting on-
Two weeks.
16th of March.
We would need a new application anyway, because of the 21-day timeline, so-
No fees, I'm gonna talk to them.
Oh, there's no fees?
Yeah, no, that was just more, because you probably would want a new application, though, if we changed-
Look, the plan is different.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Even if the fees waived, we should probably file new applications-
I would agree with that.
For the date. Okay. So, so-
So, I'm just gonna make a motion now to withdraw without prejudice, and then that way there leads you wide open, you know, do your reconfiguration, resubmit, and get it on the agenda again.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll request, um, leave, we'll request leave from the mayor for a legal opinion, so we can get one. And then Elizabeth will be in touch with A&R.
Thank you very much, you're due time.
And that might come before the next meeting.
So, I make a motion that we withdraw without prejudice. That's 3.1.
Okay, motion made second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, great. And our planning director will be in touch with you. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna open up the 645, open public meeting for site plan approval for Research Drive Lot 16, but do I have a motion to, um, because we have to do the A&R first? 3.2.
We did.
So, can I have a motion to-
Motion to the 3.2.
Motion made second to go to 3.2, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, 3.2, A&R approval for Research Drive Lot 16.
So, I do have a colored line version of it.
Hey, Chris, you got 16A and 16B here?
Yes.
Just curious, it says lot 16 on the A&R. So, is it right now it's lot 16?
I think it is lot 16. Right now, it's just one giant lot, lot 16.
Okay.
And then we'll split it, or attempt to split it into two lots, 16A and B. So- So, if you will, lot 16 is located at the intersection of Technology Drive and Research Drive, and it has the power lines, and that goes along the backside of it. It's the intent to carve, or split the lot into two lots, 16A and 16B. 16A will be the product, from the site plan approval process, we're gonna go through in a moment. As you can see, the red, or the orange line, you will, is the new property line, with the green being the original lot 16 shape.
And what's the, what's the-
Frontage, 30 feet.
30 feet requirement, so lot 16A will have 220.72 feet, and lot 16B will have at least 45.95 feet off of, or sorry, 55.95 feet off of Research Drive.
And area-wise, what do we need?
We need 5,000 square feet.
Okay, so we're all wrong. So, we need the frontage requirements, and we need the square footage. Motion to a bill, it's second.
Motion made in second by Pat, all those in- Motion made in second by Pat, all those in, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to return to the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made in second to return to the public meeting for the site plan approval for Research Drive, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Going back. Whenever you're ready, Chris.
For the record, Chris Serris is attending this hearing. We're here on behalf of Draw and Tool Corporation for the construction of a new industrial office building at Lot sixteen A of Research Drive. Just to orientate ourselves here, we have Research Drive that runs along the bottom portion of the page with technology, not just the construction portion of Technology Drive to the west. And the research, just to orientate ourselves, we're already out there. We have the R and D facility located south across the street from it, and this cul-de-sac is just off of that lot. Currently, the property is undeveloped. It's primarily a combination of woodland and tall brush. As I stated previously, there is a power line even, there's another...
There's a small version there.
Yeah, I know. Sorry.
It's gone.
Sorry, Chris, I just pulled the papers.
There's a power line easement that runs along the rear portion of the property. That's just to take into consideration. As I said previously, it's the intent to construct an industrial building with fresh office space inside the building itself. The total footprint, footprint of the actual building will be fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty square feet. Of that, approximately eleven thousand nine hundred square feet of that will be utilized as warehouse and manufacturing space. And then there will be two levels of office space, with each level being approximately two thousand two hundred and fifty square feet for a cumulative, a total cumulative footprint of just over sixteen thousand square feet of the building. Access to the site will be via a single paved driveway access along the western portion or western side of the property. This drive will extend along the side of the building and wrap itself around to the rear portion where we'll be providing the appropriate parking counts and access areas to service the building.
So what's the parking code on this?
Perly code, we're required to have fourteen spaces, we're showing eighteen. There will be two different loading areas provided for the building, a standard loading door along the eastern portion of the building, and an act grade door kind of in between, in the middle of the building itself. And we performed our truck turning maneuver analysis to confirm that a WB fifty, which is going to be the largest vehicle that'll be on the site, it's not quite the same size as the full version, but it's a smaller version of it. And it has enough space in order to make the turning maneuver back into the parking area. So that's been taken into consideration. Drainage from the site will be captured via deep-seated catch basins and directed towards a treatment system and ultimately an underground storage system along the eastern property line. This system will discharge into the municipal system within Research Drive. As has been the process in the past, we're reviewing this project as a cumulative effect over the entire industrial subdivision. So as the projects, as various properties get developed, we're confirming that the overall development is still meeting the requirements of stormwater management. So upon collection to the proposed stormwater system on this property, it'll discharge into the municipal system and ultimately to a detention basin that's located adjacent to the R and D facility. And we've performed the calculations to confirm that we still have the adequate capacity and free port within that facility. Sewage will be captured via a new trunk line, which will provide for the domestic and the water runoff from the vehicles that enter into the building via the act grade loading door. And that will again connect to the municipal system within the Research Drive along with the water and gas connections as well. Perly ordinance, we're required to provide six landscape trees, so we are providing six landscape trees around the general parking area in order to be compliant with landscape requirements of the site. That's the general gist of the project. If there's any questions, I'll be wanting to answer them.
Do you think you have adequate snow storage for that kind of surface, Chris? I think it's a little light. You've got two areas noted in there, you've got one on the side, do you...
So we have a large area...
You can push back into that green area?
Yeah, this is all grass, and there's actually a large flat area near the building here, so as they're pushing the snow around this area, they can move in this direction.
So, I mean, you've got one part next to the bays, right?
Yep.
A little snow storage part. I'm just hoping that doesn't get piled up and confuse the bays, you know? So that's really not a lot of area there. Because those are what, fifty-one foot trailers? Are they fifty-one, is that the size?
They'll be fifty foot at the end.
Fifty foot at the end of the day, right?
So there'll be the snow storage here, as they're pulling in, there'll be a small storage area right next to the parking area over here.
Yeah.
But as you're pulling, or pushing, or going into it, they're going to be pushing the snow adjacent to the actual dumpster pad area, and this area is going to be pretty flat, so there'll be plenty of space and we'll push it around that.
Just want to make sure.
Our planning director says it meets the regulation.
Yeah, they have eleven point nine percent of their...
Close parking area.
Okay, that's good. I'm just, you know, from what it looks like, no matter what, you know, the bays is going to go to.
So with that in mind, let's go through the comments with the department head. So sticking with planning, so it says number of the parking spaces on the plan sequentially one through eighteen, we discussed snow storage, we discussed parking. Says, apparently your cover letter application and the plan show different square footage of the proposed building.
Yeah, that's, I think it was just the, how I wrote the narrative and how it gets broken down and everything like that was kind of confusing. In the narrative, I said that the footprint built from the building is fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty square feet with so much area of office, four, forty-five hundred square feet, or the one hundred, nine hundred manufacturing warehouse, and it didn't quite match up, so... But at the end of the day, it's all, it's all shown on the plan, it's accurate, it's just how I explained it.
Okay. And then, identify the width of the off pedestrian accessways, they shall not be less than five feet in width.
Yeah, so we have provided a bi-cycling with a couple of additional notations that planning director requested. And we have provided a note on the plan stating that it is five feet in width.
And then the lighting details of the proposed lighting are not clearly visible indicate the presence of all lighting fixtures on the plan?
So at the point of cemental, the photometric plan is still being reviewed. We just got that back today. It's the intent to utilize wall pack lighting around the entire perimeter of the building. There's only going to be one shed during daytime hours, so the need to eliminate the entire parking area is not really necessary. But we have provided the photometric plan showing that we are able to provide lighting around the, the entire perimeter of the building.
Okay. And for landscaping, your cover letter indicates that a waiver is being requested for some landscaping requirements?
Correct, the portion of it that requires a licensed landscape architect to perform the design of the landscaping. So we're proposing doing the deciduous trees throughout the parking area, and the rest of the saddle, we just lower the seat and...
Okay, yeah, she, she indicates, include more detail about the proposed landscaping, including species and tree height and caliper.
Yeah, so we're showing two and a half inch deciduous. I'm hesitant to designate what kind of tree it is because at the end of the day, if I say that it's going to be a maple tree and they plant a little tree, I don't want there to be any kind of issue with that, so deciduous pretty much covers all the broad tree species out there.
Okay. All right, stormwater runoff was provided, as the document was too large for practical print purposes, provided electronically and is being reviewed by D P W. Add all abiding properties within three hundred feet of the site location to the plan?
So we have, in the cover response letter that we provided today, there is a three hundred foot letters list, kind of plot from the assessive map, showing the, all the properties within that area and a breakdown of what those uses are in particular properties. The property is located within an industrial district, so pretty much everything is either vacant or industrial nature.
Your locus map should be a scale of one to one thousand, you have one to eight hundred.
So the revised plan has the one to one thousand map on the front page.
As standard loading doors demarcated on the plan, left side elevation, three loading doors are displayed, confirm how many loading doors are being proposed?
So when you look at the architectural renderings that were provided, part of the original cemental, there's three doors, but we're only showing two standard loading doors and an act grade door. So it's just the architectural rendering wasn't as clear as it should have been.
Yeah, and then confirm any and all easements and R O W are detailed in the site, on the site plan?
There's two easements, a national grid easement and a drainage easement along the frontage of the property for future connections for the property.
And provide any proposed dumpster screening?
The original cemental just stated a enclosed fence, but we've updated the plan to designate it being as a vinyl fence around the area or approved equal. And additional details have been added to the construction detail and showing a vinyl fence.
And then indicate any proposed signage?
At this time, there's not any significant signage proposed. It's anticipated that the most, probably the only sign that will be applied on the building, at least the logo, and it'll comply with all signage requirements.
And add more dimensional detail on the architectural drawings that have been provided, length of each building and the height of the two-story portions of the proposed structure.
So there are some dimensions and everything like that on the architectural renderings, but once we get into construction, we'll inform the building plan and advise the building department.
Correct. And then conservation, referring to old historic files, there is a report that states that this area is a non-jurisdictional wetland from two thousand and seven, this most likely has not changed. Please provide the October twenty-nine wetland information to confirm.
Correct, so on the property, there was a non-jurisdictional wetland located near the intersection of Research and Technology. We have re-reviewed this area with our wetland botanist, and we have replying to that area. We have been in contact with the conservation agent, and we have provided, provide part of the...
Okay, clears the wetlands as a non-jurisdictional oakley. Okay, great. And then assessor approves, building approves. P D, Mr. P D approves, fire approves, so it works.
Add something to the patch.
Deep hole test is required within the infiltration area and viewed by the engineering department?
So we, we acknowledge that, that's what we performed. It's actually an important area, fills out the issue with potential ledery like that, anticipating a third.
Okay, they're looking for a proposed electrical line into the building?
Yeah, that's still being coordinated with the electric provider.
According to the site plans, the existing sewer stub is not being used, please provide a cap?
Correct, so there was originally a stub provided onto the property during the original construction. Fortunately, it doesn't work with this layout because of the location of the building and everything else. So we will be in that area doing construction, so if it needs to be capped, if it hasn't already been, that's obviously accommodated.
Then they, then they state that a traffic study may be required by the Department of Transportation. Frankly, that should be on the developer of the entire property, not one applicant of, in my opinion. Border Health approves. Anything else? All right.
All right. Good, doing this?
Oh, oh, yeah. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments about this project?
Motion to close the hearing, second.
Motion made second, any discussion? Called for the vote to close the hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Open up the seven o'clock and the seven oh one means the open me, public meeting for site plan approval for four twelve West Street and the seven oh one public hearing for special permit approval for four twelve West Street for the use. This, there's a request for a continuance...
No, a withdrawal.
For a withdrawal. My apologies.
February seventh.
I'm looking for that.
Twenty.
Oh, yes, as per management, we are no longer going to move forward, going to be moving forward with this project. Please find attached two requests for withdrawal without prejudice, one for the site plan, one for the special permit. Please excuse me if they're not formatted correctly, I've never written a withdrawal without prejudice letter. That is from the applicant on four twelve West Street. So we need two separate motions.
Motion to...
Allow the withdrawal?
Yeah, withdrawal without prejudice.
On the site plan?
Close the hearing and withdraw without prejudice on the site plan, correct?
Second.
Okay, wait, let me think about that.
Oh, just, yeah, because you have to have it for the special permit, because I didn't even have it.
Well, I think we opened the hearings, I think we have to close them. So let's do that first.
Motion to close, we opened both of them?
Yes, I just did.
Motion to close the public meeting, the site plan approval for four twelve West Street.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to close the special permit approval for four twelve West Street for the use.
Second.
Motion made in second to, to close that hearing, any discussion? Called for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So why don't we just do it under the regular business, then?
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Okay. So we'll open up the public informational meeting for site plan approval for four ninety-five Main Street. This is the one requesting a continuance from Anagin Engineering. Please accept this email as a request for continuance of the March second, twenty twenty planning, public meeting for site plan approval for the proposed addition and renovation to the existing Dakar Cat, Cadillac building at four ninety-five Main Street. As noted, this project will involve the addition to the building for the creation of the Durand Buick GMC at the same location. As my understanding, the meeting will be continued to March sixteenth, twenty twenty. Do we have time for that, on that date?
Well, March sixteenth, we do.
What time?
Six thirty.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all, to continue the, oh, I did open that, right?
Yes.
Okay, to continue that open public meeting to March sixteenth, twenty twenty at six thirty. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Go back to our regular meeting, three point three, A and R approval for three seven, what's the map? Map two eighty-nine, parcel thirty-six and thirty-six A.
Was it thirty-seven or thirty-two? It says thirty-two on the sheet, but thirty-seven on the...
Thirty-two.
Yeah, it's thirty-two. The million actually is thirty-seven.
Good, identify yourself, please.
I'm Tom Gladiotis.
Hi, Tom.
And you, taking lots one and two, were they, are they currently one lot?
Yes. Or one parcel.
One parcel.
And you wanted to buy them into two lots, lots one and lots two?
Yes.
And you have, is that residence A?
Yes.
So you have a hundred feet of frontage, you got another, what's the other?
Hundred and a hundred.
Hundred and a hundred.
You need eighty feet of frontage, they have a hundred and two, a hundred and...
Explain to me.
Hot weather is good, yeah.
You need twenty-one thousand seven eighty to make it, and they have twenty-one thousand seven eighty-one.
Doing good. It looks good. There you go. That was easy, huh?
Motion made second to endorse, any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
So you're good to go.
Stay good to go, Tommy. We'll call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
3.4, site, special permit approval for water supply production district for 1121 Elm Street.
Should be March 16 at 6:45.
It says special permit, so it has to go to the six.
46 at 6:45? We have one scheduled, right?
6:30.
We have one for 6:30. We have, 6:30 is the only thing taken, so.
6:45.
It works.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, and seconded.
Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Site plan approval for 40 and 41 Main Street?
Summer Street.
Summer Street.
Johnson.
650?
Or we have 360.
46 and 650?
That was them.
Do I, motion second, all those in favor?
What's that one?
650, 46.
Yep.
Pat and Zach.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Special permit approval for 40 and 41 Summer Street for its use.
651?
Yep.
46.
46, 2020 at 651. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 4.0, 4.1, definitive subdivision for Mary Ave Extension has been continued to 46 at 6:30.
Yes.
New business site plan approval for Research Drive.
Motion to approve.
With conditions from department heads?
Correct. And do we have to add to the waiver for the landscape architect?
All right, let's do that first, then.
Yeah. Approve the waiver.
Make a motion to.
What's that? No, because, because then if we've approved the site plan, we've approved it without any waivers.
Make a motion to approve the waiver for the landscape plan?
Second.
Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And now on the actual site plan?
Move to recommend approval.
With department head conditions?
Yep.
Motion made by, sorry. Paul seconded by Pat. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 5.2, site plan for 412 West Street and special permit have been withdrawn.
Motion to withdraw without prejudice.
We have to do that. 5.2, site plan approval for 412 West Street.
Motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Motion made, second, to accept the withdrawal without precedent prejudice. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 5.3, special permit approval for 412 West Street for the use.
Motion to approve without prejudice.
Motion to approve the withdrawal without prejudice.
Correct.
Motion made, second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 5.4, site plan approval for 495 Main Street. This is a public informational meeting which was opened and not taken any evidence and continued to 316 at 6:30. 6.0, communications. 6.1, city council request for their 12720 city council meeting. Additional information on the planning board recommendation for city council petition 2620 Jeffrey Nickel and 10 registered voters to accept Dobson Circle as a street in the city of Lancaster. So they're looking for additional information.
So, I mean, and there's been no review by the DPW, right?
So this one, you've looked at it before. There's been some correspondence between myself and city council and the developers since you last looked at this, and it's in your packet. If you look, there's a memo dated February 19, 2020 that overviews the status of the, the status of the road. I did send a certified letter out to the developers to see if they would consider completing the infrastructure that was required, and they said that they're going to be doing that this spring. So the developers are already on board to take care of everything that needs to be done for prior street acceptance.
So that's just continued until we.
So do you want.
Just communication.
So what action do you want us to take, Elizabeth, if any?
It's up to the board, but you could table it until the developer takes action.
Let's just communicate.
I just wanted to.
No, no, no. The petition, if the city council has petition withdrawn until the, until the project is complete.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
The active process will work out.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're not going to, we're going to recommend that everything's completed and it has DPW sign off, and that's our, we're recommending just wait until we have all the information necessary to make an intelligent decision.
Yeah, there were, there were a lot of questions from city council, but I went, I answered a lot of them already. Do you want me to go down the listed questions?
Well, we just gotta see this, it's still, we still don't have the ASBILs, right? We still don't have the street acceptance plan.
No, we don't.
We don't have the title abstract, we don't have the deed of conveyance. The DPW has nothing for us, right? So really, let's wait for all that information to come in, because nothing else really matters. We haven't done what they need to do to petition. So that's, that's good.
It's too early in the process.
Yep. Agreed.
I take it that goes for 6.2 as well, city council requests?
It does.
Additional information on the planning board recommendation for city council petition 20-20 Beth Spinelli and 10 registered voters to accept Massapag Row as a street in the city of Lancaster.
Correct.
So it's the same recommendation to the city council on vote until we receive all the detailed information, the parties involved, and we'll probably make a definitive recommendation.
Okay. 6.3, planning board recommendation for city council petition 37-20, the botanist grants a special permit to operate a medical marijuana facility located at 1775 Block Drive.
Okay, just so you know, that it's not under the planning board's jurisdiction to grant special permits for this type of use. It's under the city council's jurisdiction. The planning board does have the jurisdiction to review the site plan and to, and which you've done, and you've done again, a revised site plan. And you do have the jurisdiction to review the special permit for the floodplain, but that was, and that's what the approval in your packet is of. It doesn't specify, but that's what it is, it's for.
It's not for anything we have.
Yeah, you don't, you don't.
We don't need to do anything. They're just trying not to make, they want somebody else to make the decision, because they don't want to be the ones who made the decision.
Or I send a.
They're just trying to pass it off so, so that we don't take anything that happens. Sorry, I had to say that. They know, they know what it is.
Yeah.
I, I think this goes along with the name change. So with the name change, we have to reaffirm our original focus.
For the special permit for the floodplain?
Yes.
What name changed?
John said we have.
Prime Wellness, now it's the Botanist.
Why do we care about them?
Yeah, that's still got nothing to do with us. The city council needs to make a decision on this. This has nothing to do with us, so we're going to just push it back to them saying it's, we have no, we have no authority in any of these decisions except for site plan review and, well, just petitions. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm just reading the ordinance. The registered marijuana dispensary shall only be allowed by special permit from the city council.
There you go. So it's, it's on and back. City council needs to make this decision.
40th term.
Okay. So no action taken?
No action, just, you know, back to them, it's a dead decision.
6.4, we have to schedule a public hearing for city council petition 38-20. Elizabeth Wood, planning director, petition to amend section 22-34.2.1 accordingly, and it's basically to reword the Leventhal Floodplain District as an overlay district. I'm not going to read the whole thing.
April 6.
At 7?
We have, yeah, we're 37.
37? The other ones, were they long ones? No. All right, let's just do it.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, second, to schedule for public hearing for April 6 at 7:00 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 6.5, planning board nomination for the monitor's at Joint Transportation Committee, Peter Latchis. I understand per regulation or statute, we have to notice this twice in our agenda, and someone needs to make a nomination for.
I'd make that nomination.
I second that nomination.
Motion made, second, to nominate Peter Latchis to the MJTC. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 7.0, directors report, 7.1, planning and development directors report for March 2, 2020.
Well, I've given you reviews of all my applications and the directors reports in your packet.
Thank you.
I do want to remind everybody that the citizens training planning collaborative is coming up on the 21st. I will remind you again on the 16th, and we'll make a decision.
I already know I cannot attend, I have a funeral to attend out there. Out of town.
On a day-by-day basis, you know.
Yeah, well, the citizens will, I'm just reminding you.
Yeah, thank you though. And would you remind, make sure you mind this.
I will remind you for the next meeting.
She just said that. No, I know she did, I know. I just, I've been, I've been busy.
Yeah, I understand.
He's retired.
So do I have a motion to?
To go on call throughout? Motion to go into executive session?
And without returning?
Without returning.